Public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Clark. Let's call the roll. We got the screen problem. There we go. We do have a quorum. We will stay to business. Before we do so, tonight, we begin our new era of public speaking with our new guidelines for signing in. Anyone in the public that is not signed, we have now a sign-in sheet. As you come in, if you'd like to speak during public comments, we have provided a sign-in sheet that you can sign in your name, your address, and your topic of discussion. Or you have the choice to approach the podium and state your name and address as you come. You have that choice. So is there anyone that would like to sign the sign-in sheet? If not, could I get someone, please? I know you did, ma'am. I know you did. I'm just saying, would anybody else like to sign it? So could someone retrieve that for us, please? Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Kyle. Kyle's got it. And our new rules allow if someone were to enter late, that they can still have the opportunity to speak. They would just have to state their name and their address as they come up and do so. Now, the next order of business. I owe the commission an apology. During our last meeting, our committee meetings, on March the 13th, I was in error. We have these new rules and I was, well, it was placed in my hands after the meeting. It has brought to my attention that cell phones are, in fact, recording devices. And our new rules state cameras, video equipment, and other recording devices shall be restricted to a designated area of the meeting room and shall not be allowed to interfere with the conduct of the meeting or hamper the ability of the audience to observe. Therefore, it was my error to allow that to go on. So we're going to ask anybody that you put your cell phones away, put them on silent, and put them away. If they are up, we will ask you to retreat to the rear of the room. Our first order of business, public comments. Item number 2A, items regarding general and non-agenda items. Let's see. We have Gwen Holden, please.
My name is Gwen Holden. Do I have to give my address?
No, ma'am, you don't.
Okay. What I'm here for is I want to talk on the First Amendment. I want to talk on the First Amendment about county commission suing us, voting to sue the citizens for freedom of speech. I don't think it's right. I have the ones here that have sued. Their names are Mike Reed, Tim Horner, Craig Cut.
Excuse me just a second, ma'am. That is not correct. That suit is not correct. We did not file suit against you in that matter. That is incorrect. We have not. What you're referring to-
You voted to file the suit, but then you backed out.
No, ma'am. We didn't go anywhere with it. We did not go anywhere with it. You are incorrect. When you state what you're stating, this is not true.
Okay, let's put it this way. You voted to do the lawsuit, but you didn't do anything.
Ma'am, what we did, never mind, it's public comments. My fault. Continue.
These are the men and women, a woman, that voted to do that. That was Mr. Steph, Mr. Shipley, Mr. Goins, and Mrs. Iron. Mr. Reed, Mr. Horner, Mr. Cutshaw, Mr. Hawn, and Mr. Huntsman. Now, to me, I'm here to do the right thing. I want the citizens of Hamlin County to be treated right and fairly. That's all I'm about. I'm not here to be mean to anybody. I just want true justice. That's all I've ever wanted. You all know that. You should know that.
And you should also speak the truth.
I am, because God hears me.
We did not sue you, ma'am.
Well, but you voted to do it. That's right.
Thank you for your comments.
But you did vote to do it. And furthermore, I just don't think it was right. And God knows it's not right.
Thank you for your comments and-
Mr. Chairman, you said to put cell phones away.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. Ms. Noe, you either remove your phone to the rear of the room or we'll have to ask you to leave. It doesn't matter. It is a cell phone. That is a recording device. That's enough. You are interfering our public meeting. And we have a rule that says you cannot interfere with our public meeting. And you are interfering with our public meeting. This is our meeting. This is our meeting. You will move yourself to the rear of the room or put your phone away. I mean, you're allowed to go to the rear of the room with your phone. You can do whatever you want, but you are being disruptive. As a lady of your stature, a lawyer, holding up the phone to disrupt our meeting.
She's not a phone, Mr. Chairman.
It's not a phone.
She has a piece of paper inside a phone case.
It's not a phone, sir.
I didn't see it. It could be, but you are very well talking, so.
Mr. Chairman, it's obstructing to this meeting.
It is obstructing. It's interfering. So we're going to ask that you remove it. Absolutely. It is very disruptive and interfering. It's interfering with our meeting. We're asking that you put it away. I'm asking you, please, put that away. Simply put that away.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
That's just a case. That's not a phone, sir.
It could be.
The rule says a phone, if I read correctly.
You're right.
Excuse me just a minute. Give me just a moment, please, sir, if you don't care, Mr. Hawn. If I read the rules correctly, and you're more than welcome to correct me. I'm old people and sometimes I don't-
Ms. Green, we all know what the rule says, and it does say cellphone. But the lady is being interfering, and she's taunting. We cannot conduct our business by what she is doing there.
A phone case is taunting, sir?
Yes, ma'am. It is.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As I discussed with someone the other day, the placards, as they were done, when they were worn the first time, they were removed. They were worn back in the second time, attached to the clothing. But they still had the neck strap attached. And that person admitted to me that it was done to pick a fight.
I did not say that.
Yes, ma'am, you did. You told me that you could not say that wasn't true. You said you would not lie and say that wasn't true. Standing right out there. But I'm not going to argue with you. That was said directly. This is no more than something to pick a fight. It is ridiculous. It is juvenile. It is the same. I voted no on suing, as you can remember. But it was not to sue you. It was to request an attorney general's opinion on whether or not that was a placard or not.
Thank you.
Nobody said sue anybody. This is ridiculous. People grow up.
Sir. Do you recognize me? I'm not going to step on it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I posted the vote, and the vote says to sue, and I'm more than happily repost-
Yeah, I know it does. I know. Ms. Green, we've been over it.
Wait a minute. If you don't care-
That's enough.
May I finish talking, sir?
No, you may not, because that has been beat to death. We did not sue you.
No, but you voted to, sir.
Let's move on. Ms. Noe, you're going to remove your phone or remove yourself to the back. It doesn't matter. You're taunting. You're interfering with my business as running this commission and this committee right now, from this chair. We will stand down until you can remove yourself to the rear of the room or put that away, please. You are very taunting and interfering with our meeting. As juvenile as you want to be, I mean, you're a lawyer, and acting like this in our presence, it's unbelievable. Unbelievable. Sheriff, we need that removed, please.
Put the phone case down.
Why?
Because it is juvenile. It's ridiculous. They're trying to have a meeting here. I didn't hear you.
But I don't think there's any law that's being juvenile.
You're being disruptive to the entire meeting. They cannot conduct business because of you.
If you just go off your business, we'd be fine.
Yeah, we would. As chairman of this commission, I'm asking you to put that down and act like somebody. You're disruptive. I can't turn my head around without seeing that. I can't. I can't. It's disruptive. Anybody else?
Amen.
Yes, it is. Very much.
You're holding up our meeting, ma'am. I'm asking you to please, please, remove that or remove yourself to the rear of the room. You can hold it up all you want at the rear of the room.
I have a camera in the back.
And you're welcome to hold that up back there. I give you for your stamina. Please. Sheriff, I'm sorry, sir. We're going to have to do something. This is a battle of wills, and she's disrupting my meeting. As chairman of this commission.
It is, nobody says it's disruptive. You're the chairman. You say it's disruptive.
Well, I'd like to speak up on behalf of one commissioner, and I don't agree with the body.
Well, you have a, let's take a vote, then.
Ma'am, I've finished speaking before-
No, ma'am, you may not. You are out of order.
Okay, would you please recognize me then, sir, so I can have the opportunity to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Sir. I don't agree with this body. I didn't even notice that. And I came in from that side. One minute. Please, give me just a minute. But I had my mind on my notebook, so I don't, I beg your pardon. I don't understand what the big problem is.
Mr. Chairman, and while we're doing this, if you would, Ms. Green's husband, since he's sitting right there on the bench facing you as well, because I heard him answering the phone.
It doesn't matter. You need to have it put away because it is a recording device. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green. Ms. Noe, I'm going to ask you once again, please. You're holding our meeting up. You are holding our meeting up. A lawyer, a degreed lawyer, sending you a phone case, interfering with our meeting.
Well, we know if it's disruptive or not.
It's a commission's decision, Ms. Noe. It's not an attorney's decision. You know that very well.
So let's do this. All in favor of this phone case being removed to the rear of the room or put away, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay.
No.
Do we have one, or is there more than one? So we have a, how do, 12 members here. It's 11 to one that we ask that this be removed. You're holding our meeting up. Sheriff, what can we do here?
We're getting an offer. We're going to Fattifer.
Thank you, sir. This is not what we wanted, Ms. Noe. This is not what we wanted. Our rules say interfering and disruptive. And yes, ma'am, you are.
Just come on out.
That is her decision. She is a grown woman, boss. I am her friend, and I back her 100% because I think things are wrong. I think something that petty is childish and wants its behalf to be on-
That's enough.
I was just answering his question. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do it again.
No, you, I got you. Excuse me, sir.
I said this is an embarrassment.
I agree.
Cutshaw, may I speak before you?
No, ma'am. No, until you remove yourself and what you're doing, you may not. All I'm asking you to do is put the phone case away. If we can agree, absolutely, ma'am. You have that right to speak. I'm just asking you to remove the phone case and not be disruptive to our meeting. That's all we're asking. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Noe, Joe Stevens wrote, I too would like to speak about the First Amendment, which seems so very, very critical at this point. You did vote to sue. You did not proceed. You voted to sue citizens and asked the judge for an opinion, if you want to. It was not an attorney general's opinion. It was to ask the judge for an opinion.
A judge.
But you didn't do it. So the citizens, after you had already required that COAG shirts not be worn, although you had let them be worn for about three or four months, then suddenly, it was, they're slanderous, because they said $75 million. Guess what? We're at $103 million and counting. Slander? No. And we gave Mr. Shipley a pass. We said, okay, you apologize. You admit you violated the First Amendment. Previous commission censured him, and we said, okay, fresh start. And then less than a year later, here we are in 2021, and you're suing over filing, voting to file a lawsuit over a piece of foam. I do wish you would get legal opinions. I have spoken to Ms. Holden, Commissioner Neesmith. They both say they called Charles Curtis after your vote. And he said, no, folks, you can't do that, only if they're waving it, blocking things. And nobody was doing that. And Mr. Curtis said, oh, by the way, I've already spoken to Mayor Britton and told him the same thing. What do I think? Guessing? Mr. Britton told Mr. Shipley and/or some others. And you realized you could not file, you had no legal basis to file a lawsuit over a piece of foam on a shirt. But you didn't rescind it. You just stonewalled and left the citizens for fear that they were going to be sued because you never took the lawsuit back, the vote. And now you're upset because somebody has an Otter Box holding it up? You have wasted more time because of somebody sitting here holding an Otter Box. I think you should be arrested for disrupting the meeting.
Thank you for your comments.
And I want to better be arrested.
Thank you for your comments. So let's clear the record real quick before we move on. We did not sue the citizens. It came out of our committee meeting. And as Commissioner Doty said, this whole deal was about knowing what a placard was. We were trying to figure it out. I didn't know. I sat right over there with Ms. Ahern, or Mr. Horner, which one? I didn't know. So we actually did vote. It never went anywhere. And that was in our committee meeting. It never come out of our commission meeting. And ma'am, I'm asking you, please, remove that phone case. It's disruptive. When I look up, I'm sorry you're interfering with our meeting. And our rules plainly state disruptive behavior, you will be removed.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to what she said about our past chairman, we censured him.
Yes.
And she said she would go to the back if that was done.
I let her speak just now, thinking she was going to put her phone case down. Yeah, Mr. Shipley made that on his own. We didn't vote to sue the citizens on their shirts. So I just disagree with her comments and the structure of it. So again, Sheriff, we are not having any compliance in the front row. All right, then we'll wait. She got me again. I thought she was going to work with us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for telling the truth. You instead voted to sue. You just-
I've never denied that, ma'am. That was in committee. That was in committee. It never went anywhere. Whether the discussion went however, we did not sue the citizens. And you are one that continues to say that we sued the citizens. We did not.
I said you voted to sue.
What does that imply? What does that imply?
It is the correct-
We voted to sue the citizens. You tell everybody, we voted to sue the citizens. What does that imply?
It tells the truth. You voted to sue. I posted that vote, sir.
That was in committee and never came out of committee.
Yes, sir, it was in committee.
Do you understand parliamentary procedure on that? Do you understand that the commission did not vote to move forward with that?
I understood that-
So while you continue to say that we voted to do this, we did not.
You voted in committee to do that, sir.
Then use that next time.
I did, sir, the last time, and I continue to use that.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one request, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Can we get an official statement from the bench that there is no action pending concerning the vote that was taken in committee over the placards?
When you say the bench, you mean from this chair?
From that bench.
This chair, I can state correctly right now, to end this from now, we are not voting to sue any citizen for their wearing of a placard. As Ms. Green or Ms. Noe has stated, we are not suing any citizen for their wearing. So if you move forward with your comments, again, you're just digging up old dirt. Thank you very much. We're going to move on and take care of this other issue as it comes up. We are now in public comments regarding agenda items. Anybody like to give us public comments regarding agenda items only?
Ms. Noe, Joe Stevens wrote, I'd like to talk about the Rules Committee on the five-day information rule. Not one person who does not realize you need 10 days to review contracts. I point to the contract on the Cherokee Boat Dock. Questions were asked at the committee meeting about that contract and the indemnity clause. I haven't heard an answer yet. I know in the packets, you still have that indemnity clause in the contract that is up for approval today. I will say emphatically, you cannot, and I think Mr. Capps actually stated that at the last meeting, the county cannot indemnify other entities or parties. You don't provide protection, indemnity, and law or legal assistance to other entities. I think that clause was in there simply because probably the contract was written by the Cherokee Boat Dock, so they wrote it for their advantage. And that's why you need somebody to look at your contracts to make sure there aren't clauses like that in there. Now, I know that Mr. Capps will say, but there's a little catch-all at the end that says, well, if there's anything in here that's not legal, we just wipe it out. The problem is, you are misleading. When you know you can indemnify and you leave that clause in there, you are misleading the Cherokee Boat Dock into thinking that you have agreed to the full terms of that contract and the indemnity clause. And I know you don't want to commit a fraud on them or mislead them. We'll call it that. So certainly, that clause needs to come out, and that's why you need more than five days. It's been 10 days since that was brought up, and it's still in the contract. So I ask that you remove that. And I haven't looked at the rest of the contract. And evidently, Mr. Capps hadn't either, because he didn't know about that clause when Ms. Green brought it up. So I hope you will remove that before you vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission with items on the agenda? Seeing none, we shall move on. Item 4A, approval of consent calendar items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A, the approval of the consent calendar items. Can I put that in the form of a motion?
We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, board's not up.
Excuse me? I'm sorry?
The board's not up. Vote.
Oh, she's working on it. Yeah. We got a motion. We got a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask a question about the bills, the attorney's bills, when it comes to the time, please.
Hold on just a second, officer. Ms. Noe, would you please put that away? Okay. Yes, sir. I want everyone to know that I do not delight in that. We were just trying to run a business meeting here for our county. There's nothing delightful in any of that. And I apologize to the commission if, you know, if it wasn't handled to 100%. All I'm asking is that we can conduct our business without interruption. So let's continue. We have, are we working on?
We're on 4A.
Okay, we have consent count. We've got a motion. We've got a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask a question about the attorney's bills.
Yes, ma'am.
Page one of three, I noticed a little bit of difference, and this is to Mr. Capps, since it says legal. I noticed down to page 13, 23, I'm on page one of three. I noticed something different, so I'm just curious. That last one at the bottom, he has noted committee meeting, no finance committee, and I hadn't noticed that before, so I'm just wondering if that change has been the last little bit or is that something new for one thing? That's my first one.
I'll answer that, Ms. Green. I've put that in there for your benefit, so you know I have to sort of provide.
Thank you. Let me ask you one more question while you're up, sir. You also have one in here, a response back to B.J. Lowe. May I ask a question, what that deals with?
I need to think about that one.
I apologize, sir.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I think we discussed this in the committee. If she had questions, why didn't she ask them in the committee meeting on Monday night instead of waiting to grandstand in the commission meeting, full commission meeting?
Understood.
I'm not grandstanding. I just have a question. Please.
Let me respond to that just briefly. My purpose is, I'm not supposed to communicate with you, but I'm gonna do this this time. That is, B.J. Lowe is a citizen, and it has to do with something of the county. And I don't think I'm at liberty to discuss it, but that is a case that's going on with the county. And I don't think if your name showed up in the bill, you necessarily want that out there or whatever that was. But you may not have a problem with that. You might want to speak with Ms. Lowe. She could probably tell you about it.
Well, I appreciate the answer, and I'm just shooting for transparency, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Well, if we're gonna talk about transparency, Ms. Green.
Yes, sir.
You want to explain to this full commission here why you went and hid a recorder under white paper at the mayor's office trying to record things? If you want to talk about transparency, then you need to step up, learn what it means, and quit playing games.
I don't play games.
You were down there with a recorder hid under a piece of paper.
That was my reminder. They asked me that. I'm 69 years old, and I don't always remember. That's the reason that I keep these. That's the reason.
That's enough. That's enough.
I'm sorry. I thought you were gonna let me answer him.
Because your answer is, we could go so many ways with this.
Yes, sir.
So let's go.
And we're ready for the vote.
Yes, we're going. Anybody else speaking on the consent counter?
11 yeas, one no.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thomas?
We have the approval of the regular calendar items, but we have some modifications to that that have come up since our committee meeting. That would be item 9F, Resolution 2317, a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to accept the contract for the Violent Crime Intervention Fund grant in the amount of $177,361 at the request of the Sheriff's Department. We pulled that because they do not have the finalized grant paperwork at this time. There've been a few discrepancies, and they will bring that back at a later date because it's just basically some clerical things that need to be cleared up. So we're gonna remove that one for now. And then we need to add item 9J, which would be to authorize the county mayor to have Hamlin County Maintenance Department and trustees to perform selective demolition on the new Health Department site to aid in the architects', I guess, the architects' job that they're doing as far as maybe assessing the facility.
Okay, let's vote.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
All right. Are we gonna do vote both of those? Let's do those one at a time.
Would you have to do them one at a time?
Let's remove item 9F, please. Let's move that, take the motion, remove that.
Make a motion to remove 9F.
Remove 9F. This is off the board.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We need a second.
Second.
We've got a second.
Now we got a request to speak.
Yes, Commissioner Horner.
That's still on the table for a later date, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second to remove the grant until it's further, new contract comes. Do we, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? All right. Yes, sir.
Then it'll be to add item 9J, again, to authorize the county mayor to have Hamlin County Maintenance Department and trustees to perform selective demolition on the new Health Department site to aid the architects in their assessment of the building. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Richardson, is there any discussion on this item to add?
No.
Yes, Commissioner Howe?
Yes. What do you mean demolition? That sounds like.
The architects went in, and they wanted to see the interior roof structure, past the ceiling tiles, and my understanding, they're needing to have that removed. And there was an estimate of about $20,000 to have it contracted out. And our maintenance department and trustees said they could do it for half that. That's just so they can assess and see the actual building structure of said area, if I'm right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson.
So I'll explain what I know. I met with the architect, and we've hired a ser-, they have hired a service to go in and set up a 3D scanning camera that takes photos and laser dimensions of everything. And it's an aid to the design process. And if we can use our maintenance staff and our trustees to remove some ceiling tile and ceiling grid, that will facilitate a faster, cheaper project.
Demolition sounded like, but okay.
Removing ceiling tiles mostly.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Green?
Quick question. I noticed you noted trustees. Will we need any extra insurance coverage to cover us in case one of them gets hurt, sir?
I would have to yield to that, but they're on work release, and they get two-for-one. Mayor is indicating no, that they volunteer for this service, two-for-one, I think, when they do that.
So if one gets hurt, we don't have to foot that bill?
That's, I guess, they're uncovered under our umbrella as it is. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Let's vote this motion to add, to authorize the county mayor. Thomas, would you read that once again, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is item 9J, which will authorize the county mayor to have Hamlin County Maintenance Department and trustees to perform selective demolition on the new Health Department site to aid the architects in assessing the building.
Thank you. We do have a motion. We have a second. Is there any more discussion on that item? This is to add it to our agenda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, we will add that to our item.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Item five, we have nothing. Item six, approval of the consent counter. I need a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, we haven't approved the, we haven't approved to do the regular calendar items yet. We just.
Oh, my goodness.
That isn't my fault, Mr. Chairman. I told you we were done.
Yeah, that was my fault, too.
With the amended changes, I make motion that we approve the regular calendar items.
We have a motion. We need a second for the regular counter.
I'm sorry. Just one second.
I apologize.
There we go. We need a second. There we go. Mr. Horner, any discussion on regular counter? Let's vote this motion, please.
12 yeas, zero no.
And now that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Thank you, Thomas. Yeah, off the board got us.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll move now to item six, approval of the consent counter. I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Have a motion. And we need a second. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the consent counter? If not, let's vote this motion, please.
12 yeas, zero no.
And that motion passes. Thank you for that. We will now recess. And item seven, we will recess as a Hamlin County legislative body and open for a public hearing for the Resolution 2314 to amend the zoning map of Hamlin County, Tennessee, by rezoning District 05, tax map 0130, Group A, parcel 007.00, which is at 8067 East Andrew Johnson Highway, Whitesburg, Tennessee, rezoning from A1 to C1. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this in our public hearing? Number one, then we will close our public hearing and now reconvene as our Hamlin County legislative body. Item eight, rezoning resolution. We will vote now on this Resolution 2314 to amend the zoning map of Hamlin County, Tennessee, by rezoning District 05, tax map 0130, Group A, parcel 007.00, address of 8067 East Andrew Johnson Highway, Whitesburg, Tennessee, rezoning from A1 to C1. We need a motion.
Motion.
All right, we have a motion.
Who made the motion?
It was Commissioner Horner. And we have a second. Commissioner Richardson, and Commissioner Doty, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to explain I'll be abstaining on this vote because this property is owned by a family member.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And has requested this by that.
Thank you. Abstain for cause. Understood. Anyone else need a discussion on this item? Let's vote this motion, please. Commissioner Horner.
Down.
11 yeas, zero no. One abstain.
And the motion passes. Chairman Hawn of the Finance Committee, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9A, Health Department Purchase Agreement with E911. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Richardson, you're recognized.
Were we able to get that clause in for the first right of refusal?
Amen.
Yes, sir. If you look at your packet, it's item number 11, option to purchase and first right of refusal. It is in the contract. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
12 yeas, zero no.
Motion passes. Item B, purchase of garbage truck from fiscal year 2324 budget. Motion.
Is that Mr. Hawn's?
Sorry. My bad. I'm reading ahead of time. Yes, sir, Commissioner Hawn, my bad. Go right ahead.
What he said.
No, you go ahead. That's my bad.
Item 9B, purchase of garbage truck for fiscal year 2324 budget. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Commissioner Long, you're recognized.
Yes, I had spoke to Mr. Poole, I think it was sometime last week, about another issue, and we brought this truck up. Is Mr. Poole here or Mr. Lawson?
No, he had to go to the office.
Could you come to the podium, please?
Thank you, George.
What I'd like to discuss, I think for the future of our road department, the city has a truck that reaches out and gets the trash cans, brings it in, dumps it. You've got one guy on the truck. We have a employee that rides the back of the truck. This truck is in the $240-some thousand range, and my understanding, the truck with the arm is somewhere around the $400,000 range. Is that correct?
It is. We talked to the vendor today. He gave us a price of $425 to $450. And, you know, if we got it right now and it was delivered right now, it'd be cheaper. But he said, "The way metal, cost of metal and stuff's going up, it's gonna be higher as it goes down with any vehicle."
What is the timeframe on it if we went with that direction?
He said that it would build in October to December. The cabin chassis would build between October and December of this year. The bed would probably get built in July of '24, and probably would be expecting delivery between September and December of 2024.
I had talked to the mayor about this earlier, trying to get a ballpark figure of the employee, but I think if the numbers line up, it looks like in four years, we would save to pay the difference in the truck with the employee on the back of it. It wouldn't have, you know, the benefit package and everything to come up with. I just feel like this might be the time that we go in this direction. I talked to Mr. Poole about whether you could use it on county roads or not. We discussed maybe putting it in a route in the subdivisions because it's easier for those people to, you know, put their trash out next to the road. And I wish Mr. Poole was here. We felt like, and Mr. Lawson, I think you'll agree, it might eliminate a route.
Yeah, it, the automatic truck is rated at somewhere between 800 and 1,000 cans per day. And a good day, you know, they're telling me it takes anywhere from six months to a year to get real good at one. But they said that 600 to 1,000 cans, and they said the Kingsport area is doing 1,500 in a day. So our trucks right now, with a driver and a rider, we're doing somewhere in the neighborhood of 600, 500, 600 stops. Now, most people in the county, and you, I'd say probably close to 65% of them's got two or three cans. So one stop, you're gonna grab two or three cans, you know, most of the time. And, I mean, you could, that's quite a bit of difference, you know, in the trucks.
Mr. Chairman, I feel like that, you know, we need. Mr. Chairman, I feel like that, you know, we need to hold off on buying the regular truck. I, I just feel like the difference. I'd be willing to amend that motion on buying it or however we need to do that.
Well, let's, let's discuss that. We have a motion, we have a second, we have some other discussion here, let's, let's hold on to that just for a moment. Is that okay, Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Carl Walker, you're recognized, sir.
Question with this, the new automatic garbage trucks. The garbage cans that we have present, are those able to be used with the new? Or are we gonna have to replace garbage cans also?
I talked to the garbage can guy that we buy cans off of today, too, also. The cans that the city got are just a little bit smaller in volume, but our cans are made like them. And he feels like, and that would have to be, you know, if we decide to do this, we could double check, make sure. But he feels like the cans we've already been buying and putting out should work.
Should work, but it's not a guarantee they will work.
Not, no, not to we.
So we may have the cost of not only the truck, but also more garbage cans. You know.
It ain't no guarantee to they.
Right, and we're also gonna have the, the cost of the increase on fuel because, you know, the new automatic garbage cans only pick up on one side. So now we're traveling down one side of the road, turning around, going back down the other side. I do think it's a great idea to look at the overall cost and hold off, but I think there's more things we need to look at just besides the employee cost of it because, you know, with an employee, we have an employee that can go to the right side of the garbage can, it can go to the left side. And, you know, in the county, I know a lot of times in the county, in our area, a lot of our garbage cans that the people don't have two garbage cans are normally overstuffed to the top, and they actually need two garbage cans. So we're gonna look at that cost, but also I know a lot of people in the county have purchased similar garbage cans that are being picked up now that may not be able to be used if we go to the automatic system. So.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Howe?
Yes, I like that idea, Mr. Long, because I was, if, if you, the thing about that garbage can, because I'm in the city, and if it doesn't fit in that garbage can, it doesn't get picked up. Now, when I went to the city garage to visit with them, they said that our container in the county is a little squishier than, it's not as sturdy as the, the city one, but if, but I'm very much in favor of not having an employee hanging on for dear life and all of that. I hadn't thought about the, the double side, but I think it would say, okay, whatever is garbage going out, it better be in that can, and that lid, it better be down. And if it is a little squishy, in, you know, when it's squished enough, then you'll get a new can, but maybe they'll do till then. Just my thoughts on that, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. Mr. Green?
One further question about the cans. Do I understand you that they would be good as are, they wouldn't have to be modified in any shape, form, or fashion?
If the cans that we have right now are able to be used, no, they won't be modified. They're, they're telling me, the guy I talked to today, that the lip on the top and the lip in the front, that's where the gripper's grabbed. So, and he talked about, you know, the little flexibility of the can. The only way to determine that is let them come and look at it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lawson, I, I wonder if, if we table this motion. Let me back up. Mr. Long, you go ahead with your amendment, or your idea.
Well, I would like to probably get an answer to those cans. That's the only concern I have. You know, right now, the safety, you see the garbage truck sometimes on the wrong side of the road, you know, anyway, so I'd rather see it go down one street and back up the other side as, as to, you know, get someone killed, you know, crossing the road or something like that, so. I would think we'd probably need to table it, get those answers, and come back.
Commissioner Doty?
Hey, George, correct me if I'm wrong, but when Barry came in here talking about this and at non-budget time, it was because you had access to something that we could get on a timely manner. Is this gonna knock us out of that window if we hold off and build a whole different truck and everything else?
We're gonna have to, we've gotta call them tomorrow and let them know how this went tonight. I don't know for sure, I don't. They didn't give us an exact answer if this is gonna, you know, if we got another month. They didn't give us an exact answer. They just, they've got a slot open, and that's the slot they held for us on the rear load. And that's the reason why Barry come in, you know.
That's what I was thinking, I just didn't know if we were gonna have time with this additional tabling and such to discuss if we were gonna miss out on that truck.
I can't guarantee it's sure.
Thank you.
We talked to them about it today, and they had to check and get back with us, but they didn't never get back with us today.
Thank you, George.
Mr. Long?
So the bill date would be good for either a rear load or automatic, that date?
Yeah, that date, but now, they said, just like everything else, you know, we got pushed back and kept getting pushed back on the rear loaders that we started out getting the first, when we got these two Max. You know, it took a year, year and a half longer to get them than what we thought. It might be the same way with this rear loader, and it might be the same way with the automatic truck. As it looks, they say they, you know, they've got a green light and they don't think it will be, but that's what they told us with the other ones, too. And that's in any manufacturer, you know, Freightliner, Kenworth, International, every one of them's telling us the same thing. They said, we cannot guarantee a date, but we can project the date.
Could we lock down the bill date and then notify them, April commission meeting, whether we go with the rear or side, would they do that? We decided to go ahead, because of the fear I have, you've just got delivery of two new ones. If you bring this rear one in, then our window of using the automatic truck is probably six, seven years down the road. So do we wanna wait that long to do it?
Right.
So can we, I guess the question is, if we voted to lock that bill date to see if, you know, if we could?
We can get ahold of them tomorrow, you know, they was, I tried to get them to get back with me today, but they have to talk to whoever the, you know, engineers and everybody that schedules all this, so they couldn't do it today as far as telling me, you know, we're gonna lose one or the other if we don't decide this month, but I can't, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you on that. For sure.
Carl? Let's, let's.
Rodney, I think part of my question was, we do have two new ones. We've got several others that are reasonably good shape, and one that was gonna put as a spare because it's iffy. So we were taking the opportunity, I guess, of an open bill date. So it's not really urgent, important, it's just convenient. Is that, is that a good way to put it?
It is, like, if we had waited till July, the budget comes in July, and, and vote to do this, they was afraid that it was gonna push us out.
Two years.
To get that truck.
Okay.
But if the slot come open, and when they did, they called us, and, you know, they said, if you can get approval, we can put you in a slot. So right now, it's, we're in the slot, but we ain't guaranteed, we ain't giving them a guarantee.
Okay, so if we vote for an approval, we either approve for the slot for a couple hundred thousand dollars or $400,000. And we still don't know if the $400,000, you know, trash cans work, or fuel costs, or we haven't done an actual number study yet, I guess, is the question. That's all I have.
Mr. Howe? Oh, you retracted, okay.
I retracted, I'm, I got my, my.
Let's, let's somebody make a motion here of how you'd like to handle this, please. Ms. Howe's asking to speak.
I'm sorry. If, if ever we thought about, what I do also like about this proposal for Mr. Long is Hammond County educates everybody, Hammond County takes in all the inmates. If we ever thought about doing something on a joint level, garbage would be it. And this is a good start, albeit expensive, but definitely a good start towards, let's see if we can't G and H together. That's my, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
You're talking about with the city?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know who was being on.
We do have a motion, we've got a second on this. So do we need an amendment?
Let me retract that motion, can I do that? And we just go with an amended motion?
Let's, let's just amend the motion we've already got. Let's amend that motion. Somebody?
I'd like to amend that motion saying that we go ahead and reserve the slot and that we come back in the April meeting and make a decision, committee meeting, on whether we go with automatic or.
All right, we have an amendment to our original motion.
Mr. Chairman, does that need to say something to the effect that we, that we guarantee that we will get the minimum, but we won't look into the, to the maximum on it? Because I, I'm just wondering, I don't know if it needs to have that language, or?
You agree with that? All right, so let, let's state, the way it was just said, put together, is from Commissioner Long, we're going to make an amendment that we reserve this slot, and we are moving forward with a purchase of a garbage truck. We're just not certain if it'll be rear load or side load. Automatic. Does everybody agree with that? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, now we have, let's vote this amendment, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the amendment passes, now let's go back to our original motion with the amendment attached that we will be purchasing a garbage truck from fiscal year 2324 budget. Let's vote that motion.
Just a second.
I'm sorry. Mr. Green?
Let me break out my sweat.
Eleven yens, one nays.
The motion passes. Commissioner Howe?
Item 9C, employee health insurance lease renewal, put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Walker?
Now, is this insurance, or is this the clinic?
Clinic.
Okay.
It's clinic space.
Okay, so how long are we gonna sign the lease for?
Through December of 2024.
Is the Health Department gonna be ready by then? Okay.
Any other, any other discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yens, zero nays.
Motion passes. Commissioner Hahn?
Item, excuse me, item 9D, resolution 2315 is a resolution to authorize a $2 submission fee for a document filed electronically in the Register of Deeds office in the county. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Commissioners, before we discuss, I want to remind you that this motion will need a two-thirds vote of our body to pass. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Eleven yens, one nays.
Motion passes. Mr. Hahn?
Item 9F, resolution 23, excuse, 9E, resolution 2316 is a resolution authorizing Hammond County to submit a fiscal year 2023 grant application to expand and enhance substance use disorder treatment in adult treatment drug courts, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve yens, zero nays.
And the motion passes.
Item 9F, as we've mentioned earlier, has been deleted. Item 9G is a resolution 2318, a resolution authorizing Hammond County to accept the contract for the epidemiology and laboratory capacity confinement facilities funding grant in the amount of $296,350.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion. And that motion passes.
Item 9H, renewal of Hammond County Sheriff's Department slip and mooring lease agreement with Cherokee Boat Dock LLC, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Chairman, I'd like to suggest an amendment.
Yes, sir.
To the contract. I'm looking at item 12 in the tenant indemnity area. At the end of the verbiage there where it says, "May seek to hold Cherokee Boat Dock liable", add language, and I'll, I'll hand this to Clark, so that, and then we'll keep it and amend the document, is, "May seek to hold Cherokee Dock liable only to the extent of existing liability insurance insuring tenant", which is us. That's suggested by the county attorney.
Okay, the mayor suggested amendment, does someone wanna make a motion to accept this amendment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion.
I second it.
Mr. Green has seconded that amendment. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, let's vote on the amendment, please. All in favor, say aye? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, so the motion to amend this 9H, renewal of Hammond County Sheriff's Department would now include what the mayor read there and adjusting that item. Now let's vote that motion, please. Or is there any other discussion on this motion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yens, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Item 9I1, Hammond County Board of Education, budget amendment number five and an increase of $156,475.64. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yens, zero nays.
That motion passes.
Item 9I2, Hammond County Board of Education, budget amendment number three, school nutrition program increase of $291,516.13, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion. I'm sorry, Ms. Howe, I'm sorry. You're welcome, too.
I'm just thinking, maybe they oughta quit buying eggs and try something else, but anyway, thank you, sir.
All right. Anyone else? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And that motion passes.
Item 9I3, Fund 101, County Clerk's Office, $27,000. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
That motion passes.
Item 9I4, Fund 101, County Clerk's Office, $6,000. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
Item 9I5, Fund 101, Drug Court, $500. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote this motion.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item 9I6, Fund 101, Jail, $52,500. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item 9I7, Fund 101, Jail, $20,707. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item 9I8, Fund 101, Drug Court, $150. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item 9I9, Fund 131, Highway Department, over $300,000. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion?
Question, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Was that the one where we were talking about the garbage truck that just now talked about?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. This is about paving McBride Road.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion passes.
Item 9IJ, Oak Tree Plaza. Is off board.
Yeah.
Okay. Tile removal. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Now, is there any discussion? This is off the board, Commissioners. Commissioner Walker?
Bill, do you have a, do we have a plan on any of the recycling of the material that we tear down to regain any costs?
No, well, we could...
I mean, like, if we're taking the tiles out and everything, I mean, you know, there's not a lot, but you've got the grid work that's all either aluminum or... Just a question.
He's got your answer.
So, what we talked about was the ceiling tile itself, not able to reuse those.
Right.
But the grid itself, we should save that and put together a program to recycle. I've talked to Terry about that, getting like a dumpster out there for the metal or whatever.
Right.
Most likely, we'll keep it inside, safe and secure until
Right.
a point in time to dispose of it.
Right. Mike, did you say that was about $10,000?
So, the architect in his email said that if we could perform that service, that it would save probably in the neighborhood of about $10,000 for just this one service. And then, on top of that, you know, we'll have, this was just to remove the tile, but then we also are going to remove the grid as well, so that could save more. Contractor won't have to perform that service at some point in time, so it's just...
We just hire some teenage boys with air rifles and they'll take care of the tile. They'll even pay us to do it.
Right.
Is there any other discussion? This is off the board. Is there any other discussion? Let's vote this motion, please. We can do aye, or all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion passes.
Tell the head, Mr. Chairman.
Ten left, so let's make a note. He had to leave for something. Let's make a note, so that would be...
Chairman. Hahn.
Are we good? So, that it's eleven yea's. Yes, ma'am.
Before he finishes out and down on line 11, and I may be out of order, it says Bobby Hahn. It is the next one, I apologize.
Ma'am, you are out of work.
It's the next one.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, darling.
Yes, ma'am. We will now move to item 10, Public Services Committee. Chairman Mike Richardson.
Urban Growth Plan Amendment Ratification. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the urban growth plan? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please. Okay. All right.
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Eleven yea, zero nay. And motion passes.
It's all ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We will now move to our Rules Committee, Rules Review Committee. Chairman Hahn, you're recognized.
Item 11, the information rule, also known as the five-day rule. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'd like to make an amendment to it. And if I have to wait, they'll be fine, just tell me, please.
Ma'am, you need, let's just be honest, when we're doing this, you need to address the chair, but you, we also have a speaker button, you can do that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Howe?
Yes, I, I feel that the 10-day rule is adequate, and it's hard for me to think of an emergency that we're, we're five-day with. But anyway, I'm in favor of the 10-day because, because life happens. And when you make a, and you have something in front of you, and then all of a sudden someone is called away for family or who knows what. Anyway, so I just feel like the 10-day is adequate and has served us well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Now, we have, yes, Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd like to amend it to the point that we leave it at 10 days due for the fact, I will refer back to what Commissioner Doughty said about we should be able to get it in five days. I made an information request to the county attorney over a week ago. I never got a response. Thank God they did amend the contract that I questioned about tonight, and I'm thankful for that. But I couldn't get my information in five days, is my point. And in order to make an informed decision and do the best for Hammond County citizens, I would make the, an amendment to the effect that we leave it at 10 days, nine if it's an emergency.
Okay, we have an emotion to amend, to leave the rule at the 10-day rule. Do we have a second? This is off the board?
Yeah, okay, one second.
Yeah, we do, we need to take this amendment up first, and I'll get to you, Commissioner Ahern. So, we have an amendment on the floor with a second, and let's vote this motion by row call, please.
Debbie, excuse me, Debbie Ahern?
No.
Chris Cutshaw?
No.
Thomas Doughty?
No.
Ed McGreen?
Yes.
Stan Horrible?
No.
Bobby Hahn?
No.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Ralph Newlong?
No.
Mike Reed?
No.
Kyle Walker? Mike Richardson?
No.
Howell Walker?
No.
It's 10 to 2.
9 to 2. 9 to 2. Correct? Okay, that motion fails, then we will take back up the information rule, the five-day rule. Commissioner Ahern, you're recognized.
My understanding is that when we're in committees, we're still going to be meeting in 10 days.
That's correct.
And so, when we have something brought to us in committees, we're going to come back in 10 days and go over if there are contracts or whatever. So, my understanding is, the five-day rule is, if something comes up between then and the 10 days we come back, we have five days to look at that. It'd be a special call to meeting. Is that correct? Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on item 11A, the information rule? Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
So, wait a minute, if I'm hearing this right, the only way we can implement the five-day rule is with the special meeting?
Absolutely. You have to have a special call meeting in place before the five-day rule would even come in effect. Our natural movement is 10 days. Natural movement is 10 days. Five-day rule would only come into play if there was already a previously set special call meeting.
Special call meeting in between the two meetings.
That is correct.
Okay.
Question, then, let me give it a scenario and see. Let's say at committees, there is a vote taken on the support for the purchase of a service, let's say. And we had to have that vote before a contract could be prepared. But the contract is prepared and submitted to commission by email within, and included in the commission packet before, five days before the commission meeting. Now, is that, there wouldn't be a special call meeting.
You're correct, and I would have to stand corrected in that, that scenario, we would have the opportunity to look at that.
So, if, so let's say there, in that scenario, we would just need to submit the contract to the commission and put it in the commission packet five days before the vote.
Any discussion on the mayor's idea?
Okay. So, that means nothing happens in those five days. I mean, you've put it in the packet, but nobody's voted on it yet.
Correct.
And the people who desperately want this contract will have to wait.
Until the commission meets. Just five days.
Commissioner Green?
Will there be a vehicle so that we can get information if we don't have it in the five days to finish out our decisions, sir?
Ma'am, I can't answer that as far as to ascertain what that item would be, and yes, I do not have that answer for you. Commissioner Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My understanding of this, you know, is basically just to expedite things a little better, and my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that any commissioner has the right to come to the meeting and say, "I motioned that we table this because I wanted more information and have not been able to receive such yet." And then be voted on to see if it continues. So, the saying it's a definite that it will happen on that day is not, because it can be continued on from that point. This is just to aid and expedite with a lot of these contracts and the time-sensitive nature of pricing. Anybody that does any purchasing right now will tell you prices change hourly a lot of times, much less daily. I do purchase recs at Molly and submit them, and by the time purchasing gets them, the next day, prices have modified. This is just to try to help us expedite the processes that go through. It still has to be approved by the commission, and if a majority decides to table it to get more information, then that's what happens at that point. Yes.
Mayor?
It's our commitment, it's from the Finance Department and from the mayor's office, that we will try, we'll try our best to get the contracts before you on committee day. But I anticipate, and has been the case through the years, that there will be times, just like that scenario that I mentioned, that a contract won't be available at that, at committee day, but will be before five days. So, you see it in plenty of time to make a decision on commission. But it's our commitment to do our very best to get it to you by committee day and flow that way. But this helps us as far as situations where we can't do, we can't get that.
Is there any other discussion?
Chairman, I'm off.
I'm off. I'm off. Now, if it comes before committee and last committee meeting, four people were missing.
Miss Peggy?
Yeah.
Hit that X on the top, hit that X top right, and then it'll go to side you. Yes, Commissioner Howe?
Yes, sir, thank you. Last committee meeting, four members were missing. Just, that's my life happens scenario. All the while, we're doing contracts, and people are knocking on the mayor's door and hoping to get these things. Four were missing last meeting. So, that's just something I want us all to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Let's vote this motion, please. This motion passes. Item 12A, Justice Center, Commissioner? We've got to go to Vice Chair. Yes, let's yield to Vice Chair Richardson.
Put this in the form of a motion. Chairman, build out the third courtroom and additional office space for the new Justice Center.
Okay, we have a motion. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on the build out of the third courtroom and the additional office space at our new Justice Center? Commissioner Howe?
Yes, sir. And I'm assuming that this fits right into that $103 million gabbillion dollars. Or is there more expense when we say this?
No, there will be an addition to the budget. And the money, what I showed in the presentation last week was, the estimate is around $1,200,000, $1,300,000 for that space. And where the money will come from is from interest earnings on the bond. So, the money, we've already got $1,300,000 in the bank, and we intend, and they'll be, we'll be earning interest every month until the project is done. So, that's, that's where we'll get the money to do it, but it will be added to the budget.
All righty, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Nine yea, one nay.
And this motion passes. Commissioners, that concludes our business, or is... Commissioners, that includes, concludes our business, or is all minds clear, anyone have anything they need to discuss?
I'd like to, Commissioner, excuse me, Chairman Cutshaw, I apologize, sir. My mouth's gotten through my brain. I'd like to find a way to get a response to the email that I copied you for the county attorney. I'd very much appreciate a response. I didn't get one, thank God that the mayor brought up the amendment. But I'd like to have a response if that would be at all possible. I noticed our county attorney said that he couldn't respond to me, so if he could respond to you and give me an answer to what I sent, I would very much appreciate it, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? We, our next meeting will be April 2023, committee meetings on April the 10th, 2023. And our next commission meeting will be April the 20th, 2023. Please leave your books for Trish, we are adjourned.